Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman, Consilla? Alderman, Consilla?
Alderman, Consilla, are you present?
Present.
Alderman, Hazel? Alderman, Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman, Duco?
Here.
Alderman, Pusa?
Here.
Alderman, Randall?
Here.
Alderman, Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman, Anthony?
Here.
Alderman, Ovian?
Here.
Alderman, Dittelman?
Here.
Alderwoman, Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman, Steele?
Here.
Alderman, Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman, Elmore?
Here.
Alderman, Wygant? Alderman, Wygant? Alderman, Wygant?
Here.
Alderman, Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman, Barfield?
Here.
Okay, all sixteen Aldermen are present. I'm not gonna call all the department heads. I'm sure almost all of them are on the line. I just wanna note that, Garrett Harner, are you on the line?
Yes.
Okay, Dean, Treasurer Dean Hart, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, City Clerk Jenny's here. Jamie Matress here. Scott Markovich from IT. And Jennifer Ferguson is taping the Facebook. So that's the group that's here with me tonight. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask that if you'd pause where you're at or stand or join us, we're gonna have the pledge.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'm muted.
Okay, at this time, we do not have a public hearing this evening. I'm gonna open public participation. Is there anyone on the line who has any questions or any comments? Well, not questions, we're not, this is not a question answer. Any comments pertaining to tonight's meeting or to city business?
Michael Hagberg.
Okay. Okay, the first one is Michael Hagberg, I recognize. Mr. Hagberg, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you. There have been some social media posts about Home Field Energy sending letters to residents that they may opt out or their electric supplier will be switched to Home Field. These opt-out letters are signed sincerely, City of Belleville. I don't recall this council having allowed recent round of opt-out letters to be sent by Home Field Energy on behalf of the city. When the city initially signed a contract with Home Field Energy, a provision that was demanded from the public and agreed upon by city council was that Home Field's rates must be equal to or lower than Ameren's rates. Last year, when Ameren's rates dropped below Home Field, I discovered that this contract provision was removed from the original contract when Home Field was renewed. I, for one, would like to see this provision returned to any and all future contract renewals with Home Field Energy.
Did you raise that question with us?
The next item I have...
I'm sorry.
Oh, would you like to respond to that? And then I have one more item.
What I wanna know is, did you raise that question to us last year when you discovered that?
I am not sure.
And let me ask you this. Do you have a copy of this letter that you're referring to now? Can you send us a copy?
I will email you a copy.
If you will do that, we'll look into it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Next item is, I see that there's an executive session on tonight's agenda. And I'm not sure how you're planning on having an executive session during a phone conference. Many of you are well aware of the fact that I'm all for transparency in government. And I'd have no issue if council had decided to have an executive session telemeeting at 6:00 PM without publishing the conference ID to the public. This is just a suggestion on how we may more effectively conduct telemeetings during the stay-at-home directive. I would also request that when the Aldermen speak, they state their name before speaking. Thank you.
Okay. I believe the next person was Mr. Main.
Yes.
Your comment.
Mayor Eckert, distinguished council members. I'm Brent Main, I'm President of Belleville Firefighters Local 53. On April 30th, 2020, members of the Executive Board of Local 53 and its legal council met via phone conference with the city attorney and the finance director. The topic of the conversation was stated as concerning the financial status of the City of Belleville due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The city attorney advised the Board of Local 53 that the city was experiencing financial hardship due to the shutdowns of business as well as the sharp drop in projected revenue caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Because of this situation, the city attorney stated that the city was looking at department-wide staff cuts, either furloughing employees or laying off employees. He then asked Local 53 preferred to furlough or lay off of employees or if the local had any other suggestions. Local 53 at that point requested the city to identify what cost savings it was hoping to gain through furloughs or layoffs. The city responded that they were unsure of any particular financial gain other than savings. Local 53 then requested what other suggestions they were contemplating. Again, the city could not provide a substantive response. Local 53, in attempt to determine the cost savings that might be required citywide, then requested information on the city's projected budget shortfall. They were advised that the anticipated sales tax for one half of March, April, and May is typically one million to one and a half million. And that there would be a decrease in that particular revenue stream. But the city was unable to provide any projections as to what these increases would be. The union advised that, given that many establishments, in particular big box stores, remained open because there would not be a total loss of sales tax revenue. Ultimately, the city was unable to provide any projected loss of income or its cost-saving score. Local 53 advised the city attorney that we were not objectionable to finding ways to assist the city in finding cost savings in this time of economic turmoil. However, we further advised that it's impossible to negotiate in a vacuum without any parameters of the cost savings that the city is seeking to achieve. Since any concessions would need to be achieved through the bargaining process, a telephone conference that lasted less than thirty minutes with no notice of the intent of the call and no information as to the goal to be achieved was not an appropriate nor fruitful forum for these discussions. Brash action by the city, either by furlough or layoff, will likely not generate the cost savings the city anticipates, given the self-insured nature of unemployment insurance the city carries and the extended eligibility period for unemployment benefits. Local 53 has bargained substantial cost savings with the city in the recent past. Neither furloughs or layoff of employees were required at that time. The local will meet with the city to discuss what the city is trying to achieve in cost savings and seek ways that don't reduce the manpower of the Belleville Fire Department. But we must have the necessary information if there is any hope of engaging in a fruitful discussion. Local 53 will look forward to meeting with the city in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on the line that cares to participate in public participation? Hearing none?
Yes, sir, Matt McCully.
Who's this?
Matthew McCully, sir.
Matthew McCully?
Yes, sir.
And your comments?
Okay, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Please be very much, I'd like to thank the city leaders and the police department and municipal workers. I'm keeping us safe and everyone is good news. Once again, I'm here to raise a concern about an incident that occurred last week on this block. A group was using, maybe seven or eight individuals, they were playing fighting with boxing gloves on in the evening at times right in the middle of the street. The group was using extremely foul, inappropriate language. We're being very discerning, nice folks. And possibly many residents on the block. The inward, frowns, etc. were being used very often. My girlfriend had young children who were playing outside and the windows were open in the living room of my home. When an officer quickly responded after speaking with the victim, he told me of the evidence he could do about the situation and that he could drug that victim if they were in a situation. I was real surprised with this kind of behavior. Yes, city as it makes, it's something of a norm or is acceptable to the community and to the resident community in the immediate area of the incident. This is not warrants at least a conversation.
She's getting napping. She just had another one she chewed up.
This is not warrant at least a conversation is trying to sort to occur with the subject about the shooting and using foul music for kids on display. City Code, ordinance, Chapter 33, Section 22, these are police officers, they are called execution of duties in the second section of six, based on the best of their ability, to get a peace, order, and quiet at and in the vicinity of their posts, and they shall be active and vigilant in the discharge of their duties and shall watch the conduct of persons of known or suspected bad character. I feel this is incident, whether it was a formal complaint or an anonymous one, should have warranted the behavior to come to an end. Social distancing and obeying the statewide shelter and place order were also not being observed as well. Thank you.
Mr. McCully? It was, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I can. Sorry, somebody didn't mute themselves, I apologize.
Somebody didn't mute, this is, I apologize. But this teleconference call is a little unique, a little bit hard to hear. What I'd like to ask you to do is if you could contact my office, I will be free by 9:30 in the morning. If you wanna call in, I would be glad to talk to you when I can write down some of the particulars and maybe set up a follow-up with somebody from either the police department or the appropriate people. But I couldn't catch everything you said and I think I really need to talk to you on the phone.
Okay, I would greatly appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight for public participation? Hearing none, I will close public participation. At this time, I move into presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And tonight, the first thing we do, the first meeting of each month, is we recognize the character word of the month. And this month, the word is self-discipline. Meaning, think about your words and actions and then making choices that are right. The character words are very important to all of us and we ask all of you, think about self-discipline. The next item on the agenda is also an opportunity and honor for me to remind everybody that Congress designated May as National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given the opportunity to publicly demonstrate their appreciation for the sacrifices and the successes made by our service members, past and present. As you all know, the end of May each year, usually the last Monday of May, is when we officially celebrate Memorial Day. This year, because of COVID, we're not going to have our normal parade and ceremony out at the Walnut Hill Cemetery. But I ask you more now than ever to please stop and pause, talk to your children and your family about the importance of giving thanks and appreciation for all those who've served today and in years past. You know, personally, I talked to my oldest son last yesterday. We talk usually every Sunday. And he's active duty in the Army out at Fort Lewis in Tacoma, Washington. And I really, as a father, appreciate the fact that we're recognizing our military men and women. So thank you for that attention to that matter. The next thing, annually, the first meeting of the first Monday of May each year, the mayor has the responsibility and the pleasure of recommending his department head staff and appointments for the fiscal year 2020 to 21. And I'm not gonna... I don't think I have to read the whole list, do I? It's available online. It's basically the same as last year with maybe one minor change. We added Don Hinkle as a part-time plumbing inspector. But basically, pretty much everybody is the same as last year. And it is online and it is available, posted here. But at this time, I would ask if there's someone on the city council, please give your name, identify yourself when you make the motion. Do I have someone willing to make a motion to put this topic on the floor? To make a motion in a second? I'm sorry, who was the...? Schaefer made the motion, who's the second? Who's the second? Dittelman was the second, okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the mayor's appointments for fiscal year May 1st, 2020 to April 30th, 2021. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Consilla?
Roll call vote, Alderman, Consilla? Aye.
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
That's Duco. Pusa? Oh, sorry, Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you and congratulations to all of our department heads. This will be reposted on the web tomorrow and on Facebook. That'll be posted there as well, that this is what you adopted tonight. The next item for business would be to ask for a motion to approve the recommended city council committees for 2020 to 2021. And these are the same as last year. The only exception is Dave Pusa assumed Jane Pusa's committee's responsibilities. So everything else is the same. Do I hear a motion?
Wiggington, second.
Wiggington, and who is the next one? Mary Steele. We have a motion in a second to approve the committee recommendations by the mayor. Any questions? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the... I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of April 20th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Rothweiler, aye.
Rothweiler, do I hear a second? Who's the second?
Schaefer.
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 We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of April 20th. Any discussion, questions? All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes from April 20th signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, we go to the claims, payroll, and disbursements. We have no claims tonight, but we have the payroll in the amount of $868,034.4. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Alderman, Dittelman?
Dittelman moved, who was the second?
Anthony.
Anthony was the second.
Wygant.
Very good. We have a motion and we have a second to play the payroll. Any questions on the payroll? Roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries for the claims, or the payroll, rather. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to receive and file the treasurer's report of February and March of 2020 and the statement of cash and investments report of February and March of 2020. What's your pleasure?
Schaefer.
Motion by Schaefer to receive and file those two, I hear a second.
Duco?
Duco, second. So we have a motion in a second to receive the statement of cash and investments, February and March, and the treasurer's report, February and March. Any questions? All in favor of receiving and filing those two reports from those two months signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'd now ask for a motion to approve the city attorney's report dated May 1st, 2020.
Schaefer.
Schaefer made the motion, do I hear a second?
Ferguson.
Ferguson made the second. We have a motion in a second to receive and file the city attorney's report as of May 1st. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. We have no communication this evening, we have no petitions. We have no resolutions. We have one ardentance. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Ardentance Number 8439. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
Pusa.
Pusa made the motion, second, by Schaefer. All in favor of reading Ardentance Number 8439 by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
15A, Ardentance 8439, 2020. A zoning ordinance in regards to 08, February 20th, Georgia, Huesman.
Okay, this was, and I think Ward 8, wasn't this in your ward?
Yep, that's Ward 8.
This was, and I believe Garrett's advised us that we have to do this. We have to have the ardentance. I believe this was turned down by the city council, the ardentance request, or the zoning request was denied. So a vote here tonight, a aye vote will deny this ardentance. So I ask if somebody is willing to make a motion in essence to deny Ardentance Number 8439.
Wiggington, aye.
Motion by Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Barfield.
Barfield made the second. We have a motion in a second by the Ward 8 Alderman to deny Ardentance Number 8439. Are there any additional questions? Yes?
Clarification. It's actually, the ordinance has to deny the application. So you are approving this ordinance, but the ordinance is a denial of the application.
I follow you.
It just has to be done by ordinance with the findings.
Okay, okay.
I have a motion to approve the ordinance.
So the motion is to approve the ardentance, which in essence is denying the request. Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. So Garrett, we're still okay the way we got it, right?
That's correct.
I call for a roll call.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries. I show no unfinished business unless someone can refresh me. Miscellaneous and new business? At this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment compensation. I guess we gotta read this all here. Collective bargaining, negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, other representatives, 5ILCS 120C2. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session for those reasons?
Ferguson.
Ferguson, do I hear a second?
Schaefer.
Schaefer was the second. All in favor of going into...
For clarification?
I'm sorry?
Clarification?
Yes, sir.
It's Section 2C1 and 2C2 of the open meetings act.
Okay, I follow, okay, I see a 2C1, okay, at the top, and then collective bargaining and 2C2. Everybody followed that, okay, the clarification by the city attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to go into executive session for those stated reasons. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Jenny's gonna explain how we're gonna do this.
So for those of you not going to executive session that are with the public, just stay on the line and we will be back on this phone call. All Aldermen that have the other number for the call-in, please hang up and dial that other number now. Thank you. Thank you.
Muted.
I'm just hanging ours up. So now we need to call into the other one. Right, so nobody can hear us through there, right? Okay.
Jen, could you see it streaming on her?
Yeah, it's streaming, don't even hear anything.
Welcome, please enter your access code. You entered 444438. If this is correct, press 1. To re-enter, there are...
We are slowly getting back into open session, but I want you to bear with me, I'm gonna ask Jenny to call roll. Hang on. I'm gonna ask Jenny to call roll, so we know we have everybody hooked back up here, at least the majority of you. Hang on. Please, please, please watch the feedback. Okay.
You're straight on.
Jenny, go ahead and try calling roll.
Consilla?
Here?
Hazel?
Hazel?
Here. Here. Here.
Pusa?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Ferguson? Anthony?
Here.
Ovian?
Here.
Dittelman? Schaefer?
Here.
Steele?
Here.
Rothweiler?
Here.
Elmore?
Here.
Wygant?
Here.
Wiggington?
Here.
Barfield?
Here. Dittelman's here.
Dittelman's here, okay, we're 100% back. Okay, so, we will contact everyone about, uh, no doubt a special meeting a little later on the week, you'll be getting an email tomorrow morning, after I have a chance to talk to Garrett and his schedule, and a couple of us. Um, Roger, I, I just wanted to say to you, when your comment while ago, and, and we're in open session, I did get asked today to serve on a small group committee phone conference tomorrow, reference to that topic, uh, from the governor's office, so I'll keep you posted on that meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Good, thanks.
So, with that said, we have no other action items this evening, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn this evening's, uh, meeting.
Rothweiler, Elmore?
Rothweiler and Elmore, all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, you were very cooperative, it worked very well considering all things, uh, uh, thank you for all your, uh, extra efforts. We'll talk to you the next day or so.
Okay, bye.